All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Today is January 18th and it is the Common Council regular meeting here Tuesday, January 18th. I would like to call the meeting to order by having the Pledge of Allegiance and silent prayer if you would stand and have, we'll start the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll have a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Nylo, on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
I saw him.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Mack?
Present.
Ms. Deitch?
Present.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski?
Present.
Mr. Paul Prezwalinski? Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Ms. Jigus?
She'll be back on. She's having a sound issue.
Yeah, and Ms. Tillman?
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
And for the record, let's say it's seven present until we get her, get her back online.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to move on to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve that were sent out by the clerk's office. We have our regular meeting, December 21st in 2021, and our regular Zoom meeting, January 4th, 2022. And if there are no objections, I would like, I would entertain a motion to approve both.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by someone. I guess you'll watch it.
It was Jean. I don't know who the second was.
I seconded it.
All right, thank you.
Are there any, any additions or any changes, any questions about the minutes? All right, Ms. Nylo on the roll call.
Ms. Jigus? Mr. Paul Prezwalinski? Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick? Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nylo. Are there any reports of standing committees? Report of the Finance Committee. Councilwoman Tillman?
Muted. Okay. Yes, there was no meeting to be held on the Finance Committee. For, there was only claims docket for the EFT, which is for the ESG. Total claims amount was $487,377.62.
All right, thank you. Moving on, claims docket, January 18th, 2022, Fund 2042 Riverboat Claims, EFT, $487,377.62, and then Fund, the EFT, right, and then Fund 2031, what development was zero. Total claims was as follows, $487,377.62. Again, as she stated, this is for the ESG. I know that we have to approve this, but are there any questions? I don't see control of House Master, but I didn't know if there were any questions by the council. All right, with that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
We need a motion.
Oh, motion to approve the claims?
Second.
All right, motion by Councilman Don Prezwalinski and a second by Tracy Tillman. Any other questions? All those in favor? Well, no, we need to do a roll call. Ms. Nylo on the vote.
Mr. Paul Prezwalinski? Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Jigus? We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Reports of special select committees. I have not sent out the new list of committee assignments yet until after tonight, after we do the votes, and then we'll send the full list out tomorrow to the council members so that everybody will have it and can do it all at once. Are there any reports of any other city officers in department heads? Seeing there are none. All right, Ms. Nylo, petitions, any petitions for today?
The following petition was received in the clerk's office on January 5th, 2022. Petition P-103-21 rezoning R1C to R3A, Homer Bound Inc., 316 Carwick Road, Michigan City, Indiana. And there will be a proposed ordinance later in the meeting.
Yes, and I know that we have some people here that will speak to that and will do that at that time and not during this time. Communications, Ms. Nylo?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on January 10th from Attorney James Meyer regarding a list of tip funds, North Side and South Side, from 2017 to 2021, accounts payable by GL Distribution Report. Correspondence was also received on January 4th from City Engineer Jeff Wright regarding the exception of ESG final report on energy savings year one of 18, April 2020, and March 2021 in construction report of the City of Michigan City, May 2019 to March 2020.
Thank you. And at the next council meeting, there will be a resolution. It says on your, on your agenda that we have a vote to accept this. There will be a resolution that Attorney Meyer will be drafting for the next meeting for us to have a vote on it. So it will be at the next council meeting that we will have the vote in a resolution in reference to the ESG. All right, Ms. Nylo, first resolution by title only.
Resolution by title only, approving the continuation of legal services from Attorney James Meyer for the Michigan City Common Council, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
All right, if you want the chambers done, I will have you take over right now. So this is just to go month to month with Attorney Jim Meyer for his services until we move forward with a new attorney. I did send something out to you. We've only received one solici-, well, I wouldn't say solicitation, but we have received information from one law firm that I sent out to everybody today. Hopefully, we'll receive more than, you know, one, and if not, we will set an executive session. I did get some tentative dates that I'll send out to see what's the best date for the Common Council to have an executive session for any firms that are interested to come present to us. So I will make sure that we get that done within the next two weeks. All right, any input from the public? Any comments from the public? Andrew, any, any public comment? You see anybody online?
No public comment at the moment, it looks.
This is Chris Willoughby. If I may, and it might be appropriate, I just like to lend my support to Attorney Meyer. He's been a wonderful person to work with in my experience and certainly has been a good mentor to me up on the way as well. So I appreciate you guys continuing as long as, as long as, sorry, as long as that works out.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, any comments from the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I'm in full support of Mr. Meyer's continuing, continuing on as a consultant for the legal services for the council. The tenures had I been on the council, he's done a fantastic job. We've never had any other attorney, and I think Jim, every time I ever needed anything from him, he was always right there. When I was the president, he guided me through the things that we needed to, to do, and I have full support behind Mr. Meyer's and behind this resolution. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion from Councilman Brian Dabney and second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nylo on the vote.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Prezwalinski. We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
All right, and let's see, Councilwoman Dahlia Jigus has, has been able to get back on, so.
Very sorry, I had no sound, so I had to get back on.
No problem. Our next resolution, Ms. Nylo.
Resolution by title only, acknowledging gun violence as a public health crisis and establishing a special ADHOC Select Committee of the Common Council to make recommendations on gun violence prevention. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and co-sponsored by Mr. Paul Prezwalinski, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Tillman, Mr. Don Prezwalinski, Ms. Jigus, Mr. Dabney, and Mr. Mack.
All right, I will read it in its entirety and then allow the sponsors to, to make their comments. So, resolution acknowledging gun violence as a public health crisis and establishing a special ad hoc Select Committee of the Common Council to make recommendations on gun violence provision, uh, prevention. Whereas the Michigan City Common Council recognizes tragedies that have occurred due to gun violence in Michigan City, Indiana, and we are saddened by the deaths and injuries caused by gun violence. And whereas gun violence is an epidemic tearing across our nation and city, creating a tear in the fabric of our community. And whereas the council recognizes the need for community engagement and partnerships with organizations, including but not limited to mental health organizations, neighborhood groups, and the Michigan City Police Department, to recommend strategies for prevention, intervention, and response due to reduce the incidence of gun violence and address the effects on our community. And whereas gun violence is leading, is a leading cause of premature death in the United States, more than 38,000 people are killed and nearly 85,000 people are injured by guns each year. As a longtime advocate for violence prevention policies, the American Public Health Association recognizes a comprehensive public health approach to addressing this growing crisis is necessary. And whereas, reported by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC nationwide, there were 39,707 firearm-related deaths in the United States. This is 2019. Male's account for 86% of all victims of firearm deaths and 87% of non-fatal firearm deaths. Seven out of every 10 medically treated firearm injuries are from firearm-related assaults. And whereas, reported by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention nationwide, more than 16,250 people were the victims of homicide and more than 38,360 people took their own life in one year, according to the most recent data available. Whereas across all states, Indiana has the 16th highest rate of gun homicides in the country, and of all homicides in Indiana, 77% involve a gun compared to 74% nationally. And whereas, black people are 14 times likely to die by gun homicides as white people compared to 10 times nationally. And whereas, firearms are the leading cause of death of American children and teens, with more than 1,800 children and teens dying by gun violence every year. And whereas, in Indiana, young black children and teens are six times likely to, to, to as their white peers to die by guns. And whereas, the CDC has found that although there are a significant number of violent deaths in the country each year, there are many more individuals who survive violence are left with permanent physical and emotional scars, and that this violence erodes communities by reducing productivity, decreasing property values, and disrupting so- uh, social services. And whereas, exposure to youth violence can lead to a wide array of negative health behaviors and outcomes, including alcohol use, drug use, and suicide. In addition, depression, anxiety, and other psychological problem, problems can result from exposure to violence. And sorry, this is so long, but it's super important. Whereas, the foregoing findings demonstrate the prevalence of violence and the detrimental facts that violence, violence has on the citizens of this nation-state and our city. And whereas, community, communities across the country require multidisciplinary solutions that address, address the root causes of violence. Whereas, protecting public safety in the communities we serve is one of our highest responsibilities. And whereas, the city recognizes the need to provide positive and safe environments for children through community programs as well as mental health services. Whereas, the city will work with Michigan City Area Schools and Leport County, other local municipalities, and community partners to expand out-of-school time programming for all youths. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in gun violence in Michigan City. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the residents of the city that we support the existing collaborations to, collaborations to establish an evidence-based public health response to address the underlying social, economic, and systemic factors that promote gun violence. Now therefore be resolved by the Michigan City Common Council's as follow, follows. Gun violence is a public health crisis and as a result thereof, the need exists for the Michigan City Common Council and city administration to create working relationships with other municipalities, community partners, and community members to establish an evidence-based, based, based public health response to address the underlying social, economic, and systemic factors that promote gun violence. And the Michigan City Common Council hereby establishes an ad hoc Standing Committee of the Common Council to be known as the Gun Violence Prevention Committee. This committee will report quarterly findings and recommendations to the Common Council. This resolution shall be fully, be in full force and effect after passage by the Michigan City Council and approval by the mayor, as introduced by all council members. And I would like to open it up to comments from any of the co-sponsors. Councilman Don Prezwalinski?
Thank you, Madam President. And I believe that this resolution is important more at this time than ever, because I have been looking at what has been taking place on in Indianapolis and what our state legislature had, has passed. And what they have passed is what's called House Bill 1077, which does not require anyone that carries a handgun to have a permit. And that passed the House 64 to 29, and now it's moving on to the Senate for their hearings and their votes on it. And if I may, I just want to cover a little bit that was in that bill so we can become more informed and so the public can become more informed about it. And, and the only reason I heard, I, I was made aware of this, is because I heard it on the radio the other day. Other than that, I hadn't seen anything in the paper, on Facebook, or, or anything. So when I heard that, it really, it really struck me is why the Indiana State Legislature would want to take, or not have to require permits for people 18 or older to have a handgun. Anyway, if the bill becomes law, anyone 18 or older who carries a handgun will not need a permit. And it's called Firearms Matters. And what it does, it repeals the law that requires a person to obtain a permit to carry a handgun in Indiana. Specifies that certain persons who are not otherwise prohibited from carrying or possessing a handgun are not required to obtain or possess a license or permit from the state to carry a handgun in Indiana. It also prohibits certain individuals from knowing or intentionally carrying a handgun, and it creates a crime of unlawful carrying of a handgun. And specifies the penalties for committing the crime. Anyway, it allows particular, particular individuals who do not meet the requirements to receive handgun licenses and are not otherwise prohibited. And it allows a resident of Indiana to obtain in certain circumstances a license to carry a handgun in Indiana. And the Indiana State Police Association and other law enforcement associations around the state of Indiana, uh, were down at the State House lobbying against this legislature, but the Indiana State Legislature still passed it on. So not only do we have a crisis now, but if this bill goes through this year, it didn't go through last year, but what they do is they keep pushing year after year after year until things finally do get passed, that not only are we going to be dealing with the crisis we have now in Michigan City with handguns, but the crisis is going to get even bigger as time goes on. So we need to get behind this resolution and get behind the work that it's going to take to get this done and try to curtail the shootings, the murders, the dislodgement of families, and the, you know, the suffering that goes on when these things take place, and just the overall, uh, uh, I guess, description of what people are trying to make our community out to be. And I know we're better, we're a lot better than this, and we have to curtail the situation and make Michigan City better. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Brian Dabney?
Um, it's sad to hear what Councilman Don Prezwalinski just read. The state of Indiana is not giving these cities any help whatsoever. And these guys in the state legislature, they want you to carry guns to church. They simply do not care about public safety, and they're doing everything they can to allow guns to be in the hands of just about anybody. And the sad part about it, that this all revolves around money, and that the gun lobby comes in and cash-whips these guys, and they end up voting for this stuff. These are how their elections are funded. And unfortunately, we live in a state where it is, like I said, these people simply do not care down at the State House. We're not getting any help from the state in regards to doing this. We've talked about issues, we've all been in different conversations, we've talked about gun issues here in Michigan City, and you know, we come up with a bunch of discussions and talks, but I do see an opportunity for us. We have those ARP funds where we can start to do some, some investment in some real security apparatuses that could help us here in Michigan City. This is a great resolution for everybody to get into, but this is going to take some real money spent in regarding to, to bring some safety, I don't want to say safety issues or safety, kind of get the right word there, things put in place to save our people. Because as we can see, the state simply does not care. I mean, this is the northernmost red state in the United States, and they are following what's happening down in the south. I'm surprised we haven't started talking about those standing ground laws. And I mean, I license the murder someone because you say I fear for my life, but this is pretty sad, Don, what you, what you read on the concerning state legislature, and it is really, really sad. But I think we have some opportunities to do some real concrete things here to help with gun violence and safety issues.
All right, thank you. Councilman Gene Simmons?
Yes, I, I concur with Brian. It's, it's scary to hear Don reading that. We're already in a crisis as far as guns goes, and it's a universal issue. It's, it's in every corner of America. But it's incumbent on us to find solutions to address the issues here in this community and try to partner with the schools, the community, the police department, and again, find solutions, get parents involved. You know, a lot of these young kids running around Michigan City with guns, you follow them home, and their parents know what they're doing. That's where we have to work. We have to key in on parents as well. We have to include them. They need to be part of the, the solution. Because basically, it's more young, young kids here in this community with guns than, than there's, there's ever been. And if you don't believe that, then, you know, you're just fooling yourselves. Just fooling yourself. But I'm in favor of doing whatever we can to bring solutions and to address the issues here in this community.
Thank you. Any other comments from any other council members? Yes, Councilman Michael Mack?
Uh, this is a great resolution, and it's great that we're going to be talking and discussing this very difficult issue. I was steered to one of the whereas statements earlier, whereas black people are 14 times as likely to die by gun homicide as white people compared to 10 times nationally. And the statement that Councilman Don Prezwalinski mentioned that that law is probably definitely going to be passed in Indiana. You know, I don't, I don't think those two are mutually exclusive. I think they're in tandem. I think that there is a marketing and fear monger using black people and guns in a manner where you can make numbers look like they want. We've got a gun issue, but no more so than anybody else in the country. And I think it's going to allow us to, you know, start addressing some of these public perceptions that we here in Michigan City shouldn't have, because most of us have children and have nieces and nephews that aren't involved in this stuff. So if you're talking percentages, you can make anybody look bad. You can make any family look bad. If you talk numbers and then words like, you know, you use the term, they use the term black homicides. I wonder what the number would be of gun deaths on suicide? You know, because guns, I'm, I'm going back to an article I read 20 years ago where it was on, I think, I think Time Magazine. Suicide is ridiculously by far the biggest problem with guns. And now when you're putting guns in everybody's hands with no real roll blocks or anything like that, you catch people on their low point while they're drinking, a whole bunch of variables. And that's, death is death, and these deaths are caused by guns. The piece of black youth in there is a behavioral disposition, and I'm really interested in us going beyond race in Michigan City and going into what I would just call it, an aggressively an aggressively uh extremely aggressive uh investment in programming and facilities to uh capture youth early. Every year, we've got a new crop of eighth graders coming out, every single year in perpetuity. We either catch them or we let them fly at the, you know, at the whim of whatever uh family situation they were born into uh not too long ago. So I I I'm very glad we're having this discussion because without real investment, you know, children are born into circumstances. Uh, some children are born into great circumstances, others not so much. Uh, it's going to take a village to uh give those choice children choices and options to confer with the highest caliber of adults that the community has to offer. Um, more so than what's available in their uncle and cousin sphere. So great uh great resolution. Looking forward to it.
All right, any other council comment uh from the co-sponsors? Yes, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, just uh real quick, kind of reiterating what everyone else has already said. Definitely fully in favor of uh this resolution. And being someone that is directly impacted by this because I work in the death industry. Um, you know, I've seen the numbers increase over years, my eight years with the coroner's office and my sixteen years of assisting with autopsy. So uh, you know, there's no shortage of of reasons to um have a investigation of deaths. But, you know, we could take gun violence and gun deaths off the table. I think we'll be making uh strides sort of a better thing. But I I can't wait for the the committee to get formed and to start having these conversations because it's a lot more uh that needs to be brought out into the forefront more than we can, you know, discuss at our time right here as we're presenting this. But uh I want to thank Councilman, Councilwoman uh President Angie Nelson for putting this together. I think this is a great idea. I'm uh fully in support of it.
Um, any other co-sponsors like to speak now or would you like to wait till Don's comment? All right, um, any comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy.
Yes, all right. Hey, uh, Mr. Kalavich.
Hi, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm going to read section fifty dash four zero three of the Michigan City Municipal Code. Fine for discharging a firearm. The fine for discharging a firearm required by section seventy-eight dash two shall be a minimum of a measly a hundred bucks. Uh, I feel that ordinance needs to be amended, maybe like add another zero onto that, that ought to be raised to a thousand. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? All right, any council comments? Any additional council comments? I'll entertain a motion.
To approve. For support.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Don Preblewski and a second by Councilman Dabney, uh Ms. Nyland on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preblewski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have eight's favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Thank you, every woman, for your vote um of support for that resolution. All right, moving to the next resolution that was tabled at our last um council meeting, Ms. Nyland.
This is my title only, approving submission of application for a grant for the city of Michigan City from the Indiana Department of Transportation for the twenty twenty-two Community Carrying Mapping Grant Program, supporting a local match for said grant. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
And your microphone was going a little bit in and out, just so FYI, it sounded better at the end though. Um, this was tabled at the last meeting. Um, I know um a list of streets were sent out uh at the last count uh last week um was sent out to all of you. Um, I know uh Mr. Wright, um our city engineer, is on the line. Um, so I will go to public comment um first. Um, and then ask Mr. Wright at the time too to chime in if he has anything additional um and to be present for any questions from the council. So are there, are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, and like I said, um I'll move on to council comments and then allow um Mr. Wright to answer any questions of the council members. Uh, any comments from the council? Is there someone on the phone who would like to speak?
That's what I see.
No? All right, any questions from Mr. Wright from the council?
Uh, hello, Angie, can you hear me yet?
Yes, all right, Councilman Paul Preblewski.
Yes, I uh I I have a few problems with this uh resolution and uh number one is where exactly is all the money coming from to fund the uh million? Is it a million dollars?
Yeah, and we have uh Controller Yvonne Hofmester on the line as well. Um, so I will let uh Controller Hofmester ask, answer that question.
Yep, good evening, everyone. Um, in the twenty twenty-two budget, there is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted in the MVH Restricted Fund, which is a fund that um is set up solely for the preservation of payment. And we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted in the local road and street fund. So that that's um the million dollars that we can match this community grant with.
Okay, so is that uh I know that you had talked about having uh the MVH Fund reduced, so is that a hundred thousand dollars? Is that a carryover from last year? Because you said earlier in the year, we were only going to get uh the budget was going to be from the MVH was going to be cut by twenty percent from last year, so that would have knocked it down to six fifty.
Right, there wasn't.
How much was the carryover from last year?
The the cash at the end of twenty twenty-one, is that what you're asking?
Wh- what was the balance in the MVH Restricted Fund at the end of twenty twenty-one?
I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Why are we taking um why aren't we using all of that money instead of taking money out of the uh local road and street since the local road and street fund um should be used for maintenance of roads? Like chip and seal, you know, potholes and things like that. Why do we have to deplete the, are we gonna? Why aren't we using that fif- five hundred thousand dollars that was uh left over?
Um, we can additionally appropriate the money if the mayor so desires.
That's not what I'm getting at. Why wasn't it funded out of the MVH Fund from last year? That's why the I'm saying is that you know, the funds are there for a purpose in that local road and street fund. And that is for street maintenance. So I I have a problem the way you got, the way you want to fund this. I think that the money should stay in the local road and street fund. And I'm not going to be in support of this because of that that reason. And the additional money that see, this is what I'm getting at, is that you want to the, I just don't agree with depleting that local road and street fund. So then what are we going to do for the rest of the year? And uh with with uh uh doing maintenance on these roads that got all these cracks in them that need to be uh crack sealed. See, I don't that that's what I'm concerned with, and I think everybody else on the council should be concerned with that. Because a lot of these, a lot of these roads need to be uh crack sealed. So are and also I have a problem, thank you. And also I have a problem with these roads are not in incorporated into the resolution on the work to be done. So once we allocate this money, the street, the street list can be changed. And I think that if we're going to, if we're going to spend, you're going to spend any money, that all the streets should be listed in in the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paul Preblewski. Uh, any other questions?
Yeah.
Councilman um uh Don Preblewski and then Councilman Bryant Dabney.
Yeah, uh, this is, this question is for Controller Hofmester. With that five hundred thousand dollars that's being carried over from last year, how long can that money be carried over? Can it be carried over into two thousand and twenty-three? Or is it carried over until it's spent? Is that what the Yvonne?
That money will remain in the fund until it's appropriated and spent.
Is there any plans with that money? Because I know, I believe in twenty twenty-three, there's talk that Michigan Boulevard may be be in need of uh blacktopping. Is uh that money being put in the bank for that particular project?
It could be.
Is the money being?
I I I don't know how much Michigan Boulevard will cost to to page.
All right, well, I heard it was going to cost somewhere in the neighborhood of like four million dollars to blacktop uh Michigan Boulevard, okay? And all I'm doing is I'm just asking a question, is this money being put aside to do Michigan Boulevard?
Mr. Wright.
Either yea, nay, or I don't know.
I think Mr. Wright has his uh hand up, Don. Uh, Councilman Preblewski, he may have a uh an answer. Uh, Mr. Wright, did you have something to add to that?
I kind of had some comments, but I think Councilman Dabney wanted to.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if you could answer any of those questions, that's why I thought.
I can, but he was in, he was, he should have gone first.
All right, well, I'll let Councilman Dabney go and then we'll come back to Mr. Wright, um Councilman Preblewski. He may be able to answer some of those.
And I think I'm with Paul on this, because Paul is asking, why do we have five hundred thousand left? Am I right on that, Paul? Why didn't we spend?
You're correct.
Why didn't we, why didn't we spend the five hundred thousand? Why are we sitting on it? That's what I got out of it, Paul. Am I, am I with you on that?
Yes, yes.
Yes, why do we have five hundred thousand left? Did we not plan uh the 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 proper roads and the streets to do that? That had happened in the fall. Why do we have five hundred thousand dollars left? That's, that was my question.
A large portion of that five hundred thousand dollars, Yvonne can probably correct me if I'm wrong. But we have a final invoice that has to be paid to Reeve Riley that's some dollars, I don't know the exact amount, but it's over seven hundred thousand dollar invoice. So perhaps Yvonne can clarify to the penny that.
And we got five hundred left.
But the invoice hasn't been paid yet.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Um, so I'm going to, Councilman Preblewski, because I think we need to probably um resolve it.
Well, yeah, what what if I may, Mr. Uh
Yes.
Madam President, is now I hear and and I'm going along with Councilman Paul Preblewski, Councilman Dabney, hopefully other council members are catching on to this, is we have a five hundred thousand dollar balance carryover. But now we have, we find out that there may be a seven hundred thousand dollar final payment, which tells me now we're two hundred thousand dollars in the hole because we don't have enough money to pay for the final payment, so.
Now, wait a minute, hold, 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 hold. You're not getting the, you're not getting the complete picture. And I, I'm not, I'm not the finance guy, but but here's the deal, here's how it works. There, there's a seven hundred thousand dollar invoice, something like that, to be paid. A large portion of that will come out of the MVH Fund. And we have a matching portion for CCMG that we haven't applied for those funds yet. So at the end of the day, the question that was posed to uh the controller was what was the balance at the end of the year? Well, the end of the balance is whatever she said, half a million dollars and some change. That's a, that's a very direct answer, that's a truthful answer. It's just that there, there's a PO and an invoice sitting out there. That money is spent, but that doesn't reflect on the end of the balance at the end of the year. Now, I'm way out on a limb because I don't generally like to talk about money. I don't care where the money comes from, right? I have, you know, that's between the council and the mayor and Yvonne. But I thought I should weigh in that we do have one invoice left out there for Reeve Riley. A large portion will be paid out of the MVH and a large portion will be matched to whatever the match is available that we can apply, not apply for. We've already applied for it, it's already our money. We just needed to get through some logistical hoops with NDOT retooling, how they're doing their contracts electronically, signatures, all of that. Once that cleared all those hoops, now we're in a position here in the next couple of days to be able to make the request to get those funds into our account. That's kind of where we're at. If you want the pennies, I don't got the pennies. Um Yvonne can nail stuff down to the penny, I'm I'm assuming she can do. But that that that's basically where we're at.
Um, thank you, Mr. Wright. Um, any other questions from the council?
Yes, I have one.
Because I never, I never got an answer, I never got an answer to my original question. With the five hundred thousand dollar balance going into twenty twenty-two, what that money's going to be used for? Is that money being held over to use for Michigan Boulevard in twenty twenty-three? Or are we going to use that in twenty twenty-two? That was my original question that started the discussion, and I'd like to get an answer for that.
And and I think the the answer that I heard uh was that any appropriation would come from the mayor, and I think that's something that uh we can follow up with the mayor to ask him uh where that money is going specifically. I don't, I don't think Controller Hofmester or uh Mr. Wright, based on the explanation, can provide that to us tonight.
Okay, uh, if I could, if I could, then I'd like to uh request from uh uh Controller Hofmester, if she could talk to the mayor and see exactly where that five hundred thousand dollars is going to go to. And get back to the council and let the council know as a whole. I don't have to know myself, but as a council as a whole. Because if we have five hundred thousand dollars sitting in this fund, that's a lot of money to be sitting around. Uh, I don't know where it's going, I don't know what we're going to do with it, well.
You don't have five hundred thousand dollars in fund, is what I'm saying. You don't have five hundred thousand dollars in fund, is what I'm saying. It's, you don't, I have five hundred available.
I know, Jeff, Jeff.
And I think, I think this is something that um we should, we should take offline because I, you shared with us um uh, Mr. Wright, that we do have an outstanding invoice, but we do have a balance of five hundred thousand, so those are all factual items. So let's um take, take this offline and, Don, we can um circle back, we'll send an email out um to the mayor and count, and copy um everyone and try to get an answer. And, and Miss you, uh, Ms. Hoffmaster, Mr. Privilinski had a request of you to, to do that, to at least um check in with the mayor and get something back out to the council.
If, excuse me, Madam Chair, if I may, I, I have a question for, for Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Wright, on that five hundred thousand or that outstanding uh PO or bill, isn't that, the way the CC grant works, aren't, aren't those grants have a due date? So is this a new grant that you're applying for in this year to use this year's money towards that uh P, uh bill? Don't, don't they have a deadline on when you guys fill those out, like at the end of January?
Yes, it's, it's due at the end of January. I, I wanna say the twenty-ninth, I don't have that date right in front of me. Uh, yes.
So are you a, applying for this money out of this round to go to that bill to Reeve Riley? That's what I'm asking, where we're at on our billings, um, where, where we're at in our, our I guess our billing or the grant application in the timelines on where this money's coming out of what grant, because sounds to me that it's coming out of the money that'll be accredited on the next round. Is that correct? Is, is that a correct statement?
I think, I think. So Yvonne is really the money person, but I can give you my take on it. Once the, that final invoice from this year is paid, there will be something left over. How much? I'm not sure. Hundred thousand, hundred and fifty thousand, you know, I don't know what that is. Putting it in the bank towards Michigan Boulevard? Uh, it, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is not gonna touch four million to do Michigan Boulevard. Michigan Boulevard will eat up two years of your paving cycle and get it covered. If it can completely get covered in CCMG, that will be the only road you work on in two years. No neighborhood work. No work inside the, you know, wherever, it's just, it's a big road and it costs a lot of money to maintain. And so if you're looking to, you know, I've put it in my monthly uh kinda update, probably a dozen times now. Start planning now to have some money available for, you know, four million dollars is not nothing to sneeze at and that's, that's and we haven't even set the scope, what the project is actually gonna be, so uh but, you know, that, that's the ballpark, that's the neighborhood. And I don't know how all you guys, I mean, that's money stuff, I, I, I I stepped in a can of worms here because I generally don't like talking about money. That's, that's the mayor, that's the council, that's Yvonne. But uh, I mean, from planning purposes, you guys needed to know about how much that road is gonna, you know, cost to do and, and, and it's incumbent on you guys to make, plan to make that happen.
Councilman Paul Privilinski?
I'm not, that, that's not really what I'm getting at and I'm not looking at Michigan Boulevard. What I'm looking at is wanting to know is this bill gonna be paid out of twenty twenty-two grant go-around? And then less money is gonna be available to do this paving that we're talking about for twenty twenty-two? That's what I'm looking at.
Yep. Councilman Paul Privilinski, um, I was gonna uh say the same thing, um, Ms. Hoffmaster.
I'm not, I'm not, Angie, this is an important thing because we're gonna take a vote on this. That, and we need to know where the money, what is going on with the money.
Oh, I agree with you, I'm trying to, I'm trying to restate it.
I'm not circling back, I wanna know if we're paying the bill out of this grant money this year, because then that's gonna be less grant money for paving to be done this year in the neighborhoods.
Oh, I, the answer to that question is no. I agree with you, I agree with you. That's why I, I wanted to ask Ms. Hoffmaster to, you, you told us where the money was coming from for twenty twenty-two and what we're asking and, and what Councilman Paul Privilinski is asking, I think this is a valid question, is this twenty-two, twenty twenty-two grant application that is before us and with the streets that have been shared with the council, is this, this grant only gonna cover streets that are on that list and nothing from uh previous uh cycles?
The current invoice for Reeve Riley is being covered under the money that was appropriated in twenty twenty-one from the twenty twenty-one dash two grant cycle. So the answer to the question is no.
What? Okay. So that, okay.
So this grant is only gonna cover streets that are on that list, Mr. Wright, that has been shared with the council?
Correct, that's my, that's the way uh we're planning to make that work is, is the, the budget was set at whatever the budget was set, approximately a million dollars and in whichever funds you guys pick, I don't wanna get into that, but it's, there's a, a million dollars available. We make the app, so in terms of the timing, we make the application. They won't award those funds until May or June, so we won't even get the funds or even notice of award of any of those funds for, you know, five or six months down the road here.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the council? I will entertain a motion.
If you don't approve the fund to submit the application, then the next round is in July or something like that. And then we won't do any paving until the next year if it's all to be met with CCMG.
I want you to approve.
Yeah, good.
All right, we have a, a motion um from Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick and a second from our Councilman Don Privilinski, Ms. Nyala on the vote. You're on mute.
Mr. Fitzpatrick? Mr. Mayor?
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
Mr. Don Privilinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jiegus?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Privilinski? Mr. Paul Privilinski?
Reluctantly, aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Ayes.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Please, next patient.
All right, thank you for that. We'll move on to our ordinance. Um, our first ordinance, um, first reading, Ms. Nyala.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, permitting the zoning act of the Michigan City, Indiana, rezoned property owned by Homeward Bound Inc. From R one C to R three A, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Simmons.
And uh forty-eight hour notice to the media was January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, it was advertised in a news dispatch December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one and the Planning Commission held a formal public hearing on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Are there any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from, from you, Mr. Mr. Simmons?
No, I'm just, I'm just elated to see movement out of my sixth ward, uh you know, this uh meets the comprehensive plan of the city from what I have read. Uh, I'm I'm pleased with it.
Thank you. So what I'll do now, we'll go to public comment and I know we have representatives from Homeward Bound, so I will start with them and um, and then we'll come back to council comment after public comment. All right, um, we, we wanna start with, uh, Ms. Keller, would you like to speak first or um, Mr. Willey?
Yeah, this is Christopher Willoughby of Bragie Nelson and James and I'm uh representing Homeward Bound and a, as um Madam President pointed out, I have with me tonight Sandy Keller, who is a representative of the executive board and I also have Jeff Altman's from Global Engineering. I'll keep it brief, uh, brief in terms of uh not regurgitating the pack of that uh, uh, of information that you received. Um, as pointed out, this came in a petition for rezoning. Currently, that area is, as, as all of you know, is a, a little bit of a mixed use. There's some homes and, and there's housing there, um, development and for those that know the principles of this, uh, you know, I'm proud to say and lucky enough to, to have the opportunity to work with them, um, it's a labor of love. And, you know, bottom line is they're seeking the approval to rezone this to uh create a a uh, a housing development, develop this property that will be some affordable housing that uh is sorely needed or not only around the county, but specifically this city and, and, and meets a specific need um, uh, in, in particular affordable housing and that's their charge and that's their mission as a uh as a developer is, it, it's going to give those that are approved uh and that are part of this community uh some stake within the community. And uh, a, as you can see, there was unanimous vote at the Plan Commission level. They made all the appropriate findings in terms that, that allowed them to make that vote in favor. Uh, there was one uh remonstrance that was in favor and there was nobody that spoke against it and you know, you could take this next part with a grain of salt, uh, but one of the uh neighbors that we had to notify was the, uh, a principal of an owner of about seventy acres on the backside of that property that I know from talking to my thought it was a client, uh, but that property has been earmarked that, as, you know, from the city or those around the city for future development. And we had a discussion, I, 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 I can't represent what he said, but um it should be indicative that he didn't show up at the Plan Commission meeting to speak against it. He's not here to speak against it tonight. And um certainly all we've heard is uh those that are in favor. So we, we appreciate, we're certainly here to answer some questions. I would defer to Mr. Altman's if there are any particular specific questions, um, and, and Ms. Keller as well. Uh, but we certainly would appreciate and, and ask that you uh vote in favor of this ordinance and uh, based on your uh agenda, it doesn't appear that you're prepared to, but we certainly, if you're in favor, would ask that you uh suspend your rules and, and perhaps adopt this all in one uh it, one vote this evening. Thank you.
And um, we're still in public comment, but uh it will take a, a second council meeting because this isn't uh declared an emergency unless um, you have something you would like to share with us that is, requires it to be of an urgent matter. And Mr. Murray, you can um chime in.
Yeah, President Deutsch, the uh because it's a zoning law, you actually, state law only requires one reading for that. Now, the council's rules require, as you know, three readings, so it's up to the council to decide if they wanna do it on one, two, or three readings.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Any more public comment before we come back to the council and then we'll um go there? Any more public comment? I'm gonna um ask uh Councilman uh Bryant Dabney, who represents as a, as a, a member of the Planning Commission to, to give us a couple of comments.
Yeah, real quick, um, just reiter, reiterating what uh Attorney Willoughby said, I was in that, on the Planning Commission and we actually this came through with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. Um, and when I talked to um Skylar York, I had asked to be put on here as a co-sponsor, so I wanna be added as a sponsor. Um, because this came out of Plan Commission and I, I wanted to be added at that time, but obviously something I lost in the, in the mix there. So just wanted to be asked, uh, to be added as a uh sponsor as well.
All right, thank you.
I would be in favor of us doing it all in one, uh, one night, but that will be up to the rest of the council.
Ms. Nyala, make sure, would you um add Mr. Dabney and uh Mr. Dabney, I will entertain a motion for, from you to suspend the rules. Yes, Miss.
I'll take our comment first.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Dahlia Jiegus.
Sorry, I was, I was asking to be uh added as a co-sponsor as well, so please add me on.
All right. All right, um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so I had one question, I don't know uh who from the team will be able to answer it, but uh, I just wanted to ask, by affordable housing, what is the uh price range or what are you, what does affordable housing mean?
Mr. Fitzpatrick, this is Chris Willoughby and uh it, it, they are going to be rental units. Um, but they are going to uh be pretty stringent requirements and, and those who, you know, that price point uh, and I will defer for a little bit more specifics and kind of the philosophy behind that, but they will be rentals that are approximately four hundred per month with an onsite manager and um, again, those that are required to have a stake in the community and uh certainly uh help maintain it. And, and just so you know, the developer will continue to be involved and, and uh maintain and manage it overall.
One more question, uh, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, um, what uh, what is the size of these units, uh, square footage or bedrooms?
Jeff, I'm gonna defer to you because I, but one thing I will say, Councilman Fitzpatrick, is this is kind of a work in progress and this is the first stage, so the, the ultimate um, size of those is, will be uh something that's going to be a continued work, but I think they can be as small as five hundred square feet, but please correct me, Jeff, if I'm wrong on that.
Uh, yes, Attorney Willoughby, that's correct. They are, I think the smallest that they can be is five hundred square feet by code. Um, we are working with the uh, with, with Mr. York on, on how those will ultimately be, be organized and how that fits, but we are working with him to make sure that it fits the code and and um, you know, it is, is, is basically um, you know, gonna fit in with, with what the city's goal is.
Thank you. Any other questions, um, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Uh, no, thank you.
Councilman Paul Privilinski?
Yes, um this uh Homeward Bound Inc. Is this, um, so are you saying that this particular project is gonna be subsidized housing?
Councilman Privilinski, this is Chris Willoughby. I'm not saying that at all and not that I think that there's a negative connotation associated with that, because there's a need around the community for that as well. But this, we're not saying that at all. This is going to be a development of affordable housing um, up to standards current and um something on a piece of property that has, as I've communicated before, that has uh proven to, to date be somewhat workless and undeveloped all these years, so you know, to, to answer directly, it is not intended to be subsidized housing. They, they will be rental units.
Okay, um, I don't know if anybody, if everyone has uh looked at the description in the uh plan, uh, could you describe the actual width of the lot and the depth of the lot that it'll be on? And how many units will be on there?
Um, I believe that it's not going to exceed ten, but I will let Mr. Altman's correct me on the technical part. Uh, what I would like all of you to pay attention to, and we, we had to emphasize this at the Plan Commission level, is those plans are very preliminary in nature, however, what we're asking is for the rezoning that allows us to do whatever we can do on that property. So we're not um in, in terms of any variances or those things, there's more process to that. The ultimate plans are what we can do will stem from, you know, getting across this first hurdle and then some more planning with Global as well as Mr. York in his office. So I cannot give you today, I can have Mr. Altman's explain the plans a little bit if that will help you, but those are very, very preliminary in nature. Uh, there's also wetlands that we had determined and, and you know, Homeward Bound being in a nonprofit, you know, invested a significant amount already to make sure that we're in compliance and, and that we're not affecting those the wetlands in any way, which quite honestly, those wetlands limit the amount of units that can ever go there. So what you may see is some space does not, is not indicative of those, uh, future expansion. So the preliminary plans very much show the maximum that is likely to be on that property because of the limits of the property in general.
Okay, so you're saying that, I understand what you're talking about the wetlands and all that. So you're saying the maximum amount of units is gonna be ten, right? I just asked for, let me, let me ask this question. Is that lot, uh, is that lot a hundred feet wide or is it eighty feet wide? And is it in the neighborhood of, uh, is it two hundred feet in depth? I'm just trying to get a picture of how compacted that, compacted that is and I understand that it's preliminary in nature. So what you're saying is that you're not really sure if you're gonna put ten units on there. You can end up putting eight units on there, correct?
That's right, and I will defer to Mr. Altman's a little bit on the dimensions, but that could be, I mean, there, there's soil studies to be done. There's, there's a lot of process that's left here, right? And, and many requirements that we have to, uh, meet in terms of the, the, uh, the city code. So it, it could turn out to be eight. I, I, I don't want to mislead you though. Of course, my client wants to develop the maximum there, but you're looking at the maximum in those very preliminary reports because of the layout of the land. And then as far as the technical parts, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Altman's.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, um, currently the lot is, is a hundred and eighteen feet wide. Um, and the, the depth that we can go before we actually start to run into the wetland area is two hundred and eight feet deep. So it's a hundred and eighteen by two oh eight is the, is the dimensions of the lot that we're working with.
Thank you, Mr. Altman.
Thank you.
Um, Councilman Don Przewlinski?
Yeah, question for Attorney Willoughby. Who is the developer on this project and does he have any other? Or does that developer have any other projects, uh, within a fifty mile radius of Michigan City?
Well, let me, I'm, I'm using the term developer as my client. My client is developing and will oversee this plan with the assistance of Global Engineering and retaining the contractors from there. So the concept of it, it is going to be built, but it is going to be funded as the developer, which is Homeward Bound.
Okay, who's the developer?
My client is the developer, Mr. Przewlinski. And, and it, in terms of the building, they have a concept. They will do everything that's within the code. They're the ones funding it and they are the developer.
So what you're saying is you're not gonna tell me who the actual developer is of this project?
No, no, I'm not saying that at all. I'm being one hundred percent forthright. Our, our, our clients, my client, which is Homeward Bound, they're going to oversee, you know, they will have contractors that put the plans in place that are developed from the engineer and the architect, but our clients will oversee and will be in compliance with what the city code requires. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Um, I know we talked about doing this in, in, in all tonight. We would need a motion to suspend the rules, to do all three readings on this evening. Is anyone willing to entertain that motion?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to get this done tonight.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Mack and a second by Councilman Gene Simmons. Ms. Nyle, upon the roll call, we need two thirds vote for us to move forward.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Nyle, I, um, let's move to second reading for this, this ordinance.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending the zoning map of Michigan City Indiana to rezone property owned by Homeward Bound. Um, and, and from R one C to R three A, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Simmons, uh, Ms. Jagus and Mr. Dabney.
All right, are there any additional comments from the sponsors? Any additional comments from the public? Yes, Mr.
Hi, this is Tommy Kalavich. I'd like to see what the, what the property ID of this, uh, of this property is. Uh, you know, you can look it up on Schneider Beacon and you could like the previous, so you can see who the owner is and who the developer is going to be. So that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public? Any additional comments from the council?
I have a, I have another, another question for, uh, these guys. Is this, uh, um, group, uh, Homeward Bound Inc., is it in any way connected with the, uh, Opportunity Enterprises in Porter County?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right. Any additional comments from the council? All right, we will move this ordinance on to third reading. Ms. Nyle?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the zoning map of Michigan City Indiana to rezone property owned by Homeward Bound Inc. From R one C to R three A, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Jagus.
All right, any comments from the, the sponsors and co-sponsors? All right, any additional comments from the public? All right, any comments from the council? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All right, motion by Councilman Fitzpatrick, second by Councilman Don Przewlinski, Ms. Nyle upon the vote.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Congratulations, Homeward Bound, and good luck on, on the plans and hopefully you can get a, a follow-up on what you got next. So thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Council. Thank you for wrapping this up in one night.
All right, have a good one. All right, so moving on to our next ordinance on second reading. Ms. Nyle?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance establishing salaries for the police department of the city of Michigan City for the calendar year twenty twenty-two, and this is introduced by Mr. Don Przewlinski, Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
And Mr. Bryant Dabney, you can, you, you went out. All right, are there any comments from the sponsors?
Ma'am, yeah, Madam President, uh, this evening I'm also, I'm gonna be asked for readings on second and third readings tonight. But I don't have anything to add, uh, you know, to this. I mean, he said we're setting salaries for, uh, twenty twenty-two. And, uh, you know, we're in the midst of negotiations and, you know, we'll go from there.
All right. Yes, Paul Przewl, Councilman Paul Przewlinski, you got a comment?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, um, any other comments from the sponsors? All right, Council, uh.
Senator Deitch? Senator Deitch, this is Jim. This is not a zoning ordinance, so there would have to be a finding that there's an emergency to pass it on less than two readings.
This is already on second reading. We're just gonna do second and third.
Okay, never mind. Sorry.
No problem, no problem. Um, so any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, um, comments from the council, um, I would, if you would like to entertain a motion to, to do second and third.
I shall make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and have this on third reading tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Work, work.
All right, we have that. Support by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, Ms. Nyle upon the vote.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch? We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, we're still on second reading. Any additional comments from the council before we move to third reading? All right, Ms. Nyle, third, on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance establishing salaries for the police department of the city of Michigan City for the calendar year twenty twenty-two. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Przewlinski, Mr. Paul Przewlinski and Mr. Dabney.
All right, any additional comments from the sponsors? All right, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, any comments from the council?
To approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Don Przewlinski, second by Councilman Parker Przewlinski, Ms. Nyle upon the vote.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. All right, next ordinance on third reading, Ms. Nyle?
An ordinance on second reading by title only prohibiting the use of.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one. Thank you.
Okay. An ordinance on second reading by title only prohibiting the use of MBH funds for constructing or capital repairs of streets within the boundaries of the city of Tip District. This is introduced by Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, seeing that, uh, at the last meeting, how the vote content went down and, uh, the in, information at the, uh, meeting that at this time I would like to remove this from the, uh, table.
All right.
From the agenda.
All right, thank you. Um, is there any other council member willing to take on sponsorship of this ordinance at this time? All right, thank you. Um, so we will move on. This is now off the table and, I mean, off the agenda. And we will move on to the next ordinance on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending municipal code section two dash four five seven, commission. This is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
All right, council have any comments?
Um, no, not really, other than it's in, I'm sorry, I apologize, Madam President, thank you. Um, I just would like to just reiterate that it's in regards to amending, um, the members for the social status of African-American males, whether it should be LaPorte County or Michigan City residency. And as it states, um, I'll just paraphrase a little bit of it, um, which states now therefore be in ordained by the common council on the city of Michigan City, Indiana, that the last two sentences of section two dash four five seven, B two B of Michigan City Municipal Code shall be amended to read as follows. All appointments made must be bona fide residents within Michigan City and all members shall continue to serve until their successor is appointed.
All right, are there any comments from the public? I know, um, we had a few people that wanted to speak this evening.
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I have a special announcement to make. I've just recently joined the, I'm now a member of the NAACP. So if my dear longtime friend Nikki Troutman ever decides to, uh, to resign, I can file for her seat. I've known her for her and her kids ever since they were babies. I remember one night they told her, little boy Michael, Harlem Globetrotters told Michael, or now Damian, that he needs to pull his pants up. But, uh, yeah, I think all your board and commission members need to be city residents. They all have to be registered voters in our municipal elections. As it stands right now, my dear sweet old seventy-eight mother lives out in the country, she could file to be a member of the Michigan City Social Status of African-American males. So I think we need to get that changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public? I see Ms. Nyla Williams. State your name and address and, and then your comments.
Madam Chair, this is Nyla Williams, um, eight oh six Fern Street, Michigan City, Indiana. I'm just speaking on behalf of the commission. Um, I did, um, well, at the last social status meeting last Wednesday on January twelfth, um, the commissioners, um, whether they did not vote, and we won't go into that tonight. But we did not vote on several different things, but one thing that they wanted to vote on was that wording of LaPorte County residents. Um, the vote was eight to two that they wanted to keep it as LaPorte County residents. And several of the commissioners had, you know, suggestions as to why they felt this way. One comment was that we have programming, not just in Michigan City, but in LaPorte County. We help African-American males that are in LaPorte County, not just Michigan City. Our commission is never focused on just, um, entertaining, assisting, educating, helping African-American males only in Michigan City. I've been on this commission for seven, eight years or more and we had, you know, years and years of success, which there was a letter sent also from the executive um, director of Indianapolis about our work that we have done. And, you know, my personal feeling is I think it should be LaPorte County, but, you know, at the end of the day, it is up to you all. But, you know, there was letter sent prior to this from, you know, the interim chair at the time was Joan Ganshaw. I think she sent the letter that the commission was never even, you know, a part of this being sent to the council in the first place. So when we did hear about it, it was kind of concerning that these things were happening without the commission, um, input. Um, I think, you know, moving forward, whether or not I be interim chair or treasurer or whatever on this commission, that I think you should all look at, um, if you have a liaison, which is Councilwoman Tracy Tillman or whoever it is, you know, used to be, um, Councilwoman, Councilman Simmons at the time. We should be able to talk to that liaison. We should be able to have those thoughts and concerns, whatever, talked about at the commission and then taken to the council. You know, that, that is a part of what the liaison is supposed to do and if I'm not correct, you know, please correct me. But that is what, um, we thought it was. So I'm, I'm just speaking on behalf of the commission. I sent this email and it was late to get it on, so I wanted to read it um, since I had taken that vote at the time.
Um, please do, please, if you have the letter, um, um, you have permission to go ahead and read it.
Okay, well, which letter, the letter from, uh?
Unless you want to give comments, um, no, you're saying you had a letter that you wanted in the record?
Well, the letter, the email that I sent, you know, to inform you all, it was too late to get, but it, I was just letting everyone know at that meeting.
Oh.
It was voted and passed, um. But the letter, you all showed, you already had a copy of it, it was sent from, um, Joan Ganshaw at the time, and it was sent to the mayor and I think Sean Pat- it's Patrick at the time, um, he was president.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other comments from the public?
Hi, this is Kerry Hogan, uh, ten twenty-six Chicago Street. I'm also a commissioner on the social status of African-American males. I just wanted to second Commissioner Williams. Um, this has been an enormous drain of time and resources, uh, focused on this. Uh, removing resources from the commission does zero for the people, uh, for the, uh, people that we're trying to help and that we're trying to support. Uh, I would ask you to not change this, uh, based off, uh, the anger of a few people to make a huge decision for the commission like this, so, I just want to again, uh, back up Commissioner Williams in this, if I could, thank you.
Okay, I also see that, um, Mrs. Fay Moore, uh, it, has her hand raised? All right, uh, Ms. Fay Moore, your, um, address as well?
Yes, Fay Moore, five fifteen Gray Street, Michigan City, Indiana. And I have been a former, uh, social status commission member, and I think that the names should stay the same, and the commissioners should stay the same. If you look at the, um, the different, uh, areas that we focus on, um, we folk, we, we represent the whole county, we don't just represent Michigan City residents. And the funding, when we get funding and do projects or whatever, we get more support from Potawatomi, Long Beach, and surrounding areas than we do from Michigan City residents. So the names should stay the same, the people, the commissioners should be, uh, according to their area of expertise for the, for the social status commission, and if it's been successful, why change it now?
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Corley.
Hi, uh, my name's Marty Corley, I live at two eighteen Gladys Street here in Michigan City. Um, again, being a, a longstanding member of the commission for twenty years, um, presently just did not renew my, um, term and some work responsibilities, but, um, I feel, uh, again, that the residency, uh, should be, stay the same as the county, um, and I state my point for these reasons. Um, being on this commission for various years and dealing with our, our subject matters, African-American males, that it's just not about Michigan City when it comes to the resources that we have to, uh, deal with, uh, the social status African-American male. Um, we have many commissioners who don't live in Michigan City specifically, but do all their work and business here and have, and contribute to the success that African-American males can have in this community. So I know there's many commissions that have Michigan City residency, but I think, uh, for this commission, we need to look beyond what other commissions do in, due to the special subject matter we have here, the population we represent, um, in this commission, that, uh, we shouldn't limit our membership due to, just in the city. Again, going back to what, uh, Ms. Williams said and, um, also Ms. Moore said, you know, a lot of our resources come from outside Michigan City. Um, being on this commission several years, I've, I've, uh, won grants and monies that come from the state, county, and so forth. Um, and so those are resources that we came out, and, and I know we're talking about people in this, in, in members, but again, I feel like this, this commission is, has a, a different special interest in that, you know, we should not limit membership to just Michigan City residents, um, because we will then, um, discard people who I think can be resources, and again, I, I know like myself, what I will do, I, you can serve on the subcommittee. But again, um, this commission, uh, LaPorte County residency part has been on this commission, I know from at least two thousand and three, if not from the, uh, beginning of the commission. Um, and, um, has worked for us since, um, from then to now, and I don't see why we want to change it to, again, discard people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, um, any other, um, public comments?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. Um, there's a couple of comments I want to add to this, um, I heard Mr. Corley just speaking. Um, I was a commissioner on the, on there for, uh, a year and a half. Um, there was a rule that took me off, uh, my first year, and we passed the rule and made things happen. And I'm not opposed to passing rules to make people stay on, but in my case, the rule was made to take me completely off, and none of, uh, no one here advocated for me except three or four people. This is not about taking anyone off the social status. This, this will, you can still serve on the subcommittee. Article five, article five, section three is clear, that if non-members can serve on this, on the subcommittees. I have not seen, I have not received, um, I never seen, we, I never seen any dime of this resource that Mr. Corley was speaking of from the county. Um, it's easy to say somebody's giving us something, but when I look at the treasury report, I've never seen somebody from the county or somewhere else giving us money, it's always a fundraiser that Mr. Corley put on. And it was here in Michigan City and not outside of Michigan City. And on another note, I was, um, been going through a lot of things with my family, and I, I had a chance to listen to the, um, some comments that were made by Duane Perry and, uh, Mr. Mack and Mr. Dabney. Um, a lot of us on the board, um, I heard y'all use the word, keep talking about somebody's education. Um, I talked to Mr. Mack on the phone, and I just feel offended, as if, you know, the comments that were made made it seem like that we are uneducated. Um, for whatever reason, we have a group of people who just don't like to follow the rules, and this, this is not what it should be about. We should be doing the right thing, following the rules all the time, despite who the person is. None of us, I, I want to just repeat what Pastor Carroll said at our last meeting. Can any one of us go join, uh, a, a commission on the, at the, uh, Potawatomi Park, Trail Creek, Long Beach? No, we can't. You should be a resident, you should have invested interest in it, and nobody, I don't know why everybody keeps saying somebody's going to be kicked off the board. You are not going to be kicked off, if you want to serve as a, on a sub-chair, a chair, you can do that on the subcommittee, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, um, Mrs., uh, Ms., um, Albertine Allen.
Good evening, my name is Albertine Allen, and I live at three oh nine Euclid Avenue. Um, I just want to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Corley said and Nyla said. Also, I want to remind those that we had two members on the board, one was named Jim Stanley, and he didn't live in Michigan City proper, uh, but he did a wonderful job helping the African-American males get in the trade unions. Also, those African-American males that served in the service were not getting their funds. And so he made it a point to go to them personally and drive them to a port, so that they could, um, I guess this was the agent ordinance that they suffered from, and then we had another member on our board, her name was Sally Ankeny, and she didn't live in Michigan City either, but those, those people donated funds to help us run that Black Barber Shop initiative. They helped with the African-American males getting in the trade unions, and also, Ms. Ankeny was supporting all those activities that we did at Minority Health along with the social status. We partnered together. And so our funds didn't come from Michigan City, they came from Indianapolis, and they came from the Indiana State Department of Health. So those funds we have used incundit with the social status, and I don't think that anyone on our board or commission should have, uh, should make a change without bringing it before the commission. We have a right to vote, that's our right, that's why we all sit there together, we have a right to vote. And it's our right to vote for something we like or, or not, you know, if you don't want to vote for it, that's fine, but allow us the chance to vote. That's, that's what I'm saying, and if, if we can't do that, then give us another liaison member from the, from the county, from the city council, give us somebody else that will work with us and not by themselves, that's my comment.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public, yes, Ms. Ganshaw.
Um, hello, everyone, my name is Joan Ganshaw, I live at six twenty-eight Pine Tree Drive. Sometimes my business address says Michigan City, sometimes it says Trail Creek. Um, but I do business in four counties in the state of Indiana, and it's a private practice for mental health, but I served, um, thirteen years in the Department of Corrections, when I left, I was director of psychology. I share that with some of you because I've also been on the commission for twenty years. Our, um, our resolution has always said LaPorte County, and then, um, Tracy Tillman joined us as a liaison and brought to you that it would be in the best interest of the social status that we change our name or we change our membership to just Michigan City. That was never brought to the whole commission. We never voted on that, we never said we wanted that, we shared that with her. I also shared in a letter with you when I was interim chair, um, the sequence of events as they happened with the common council. We're asking that we continue to have the residency be LaPorte County, that's all we're asking, as it's always been until the two readings that preceded this. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, um, any other comments from the public? Any additional comments from the public? All right. Comments from the council? Councilman Tillman, Councilwoman Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I do support the ordinance amendment of two dash four five seven. Um, I would like to concur with a statement of Commissioner Hogan. I agree, the bylaws have been pending since two thou- around July of two thousand and one. This is a matter that should have been resolved. Um, in regards to Commissioner McCormick, I concur. Um, in regards to my position as liaison, I did not so asked to be on the commission to a certain degree, but it was voted upon. Council members have the right to say no. I stand on the side of what is right to the best of my ability, and according to my understanding and interpretation of statute, policies, and law. And in regards to statements that have been made in regards to decisions, we have had numerous council, uh, commissioner meetings that I have been included in attendance regarding the bylaws. There has been somewhat of an equal or unequal ballot in regards to should we keep residency LaPorte County or Michigan City? All that has been taken heed, I addressed the council members with this as well. Some of those conversations with certain council members fell on deaf ears because it was of none importance. But this is not something that is gone on based off a decision that I am making. It is based off decisions and comments and commission meetings that I have been in attendance, probably more so other than the last two months due to that I was ill. So whatever occurred during those past two months, I was not in attendance, so I'm not held accountable, but I did follow up on those meetings. Uh, Commissioner, um, Mrs. Albertine, you indicated in regards to following the law and procedures and the request to have me removed, and rightfully so, you have the right to request that. But if we're talking about following laws, procedures, bylaws, ordinances, there is something I would like to share with all the commissioners who are presently on here. I do apologize of taking up time to address this ongoing indirect and personal comments and attacks in regards to people, characters, um, and that is, I have consulted with the city attorney, has been involved in regards to this amendment, as so has the council attorney, and that they are also in the agreement with the language. That was not brought to my attention by any council member as to why I, uh, requested to have this amendment done for the record. Secondly, in regards to following the procedure, if it has been done, I would like someone to please address me now. Um, was there a meeting of vote for our current intern for Mrs. Williams? Because according to Attorney Myers, the council attorney, I asked.
That's out of order, Councilwoman Tillman, that's a, that's a difference. This is specifically about this ordinance, do you have to bring that up in your council moment?
Understand, I, I, I can hold off on that. But in regards to the residency, yes, that have been the bylaws since two thousand and three. But since then, it's, it saddens me that people or that individuals is under the impression that if we, or this commission has done so well all these years, why would you think that those who have donated will withdraw their donations if we changed it to Michigan City residency? It doesn't prohibit us to stop serving all African-American males in the county. So I don't understand why all of a sudden that there is a discrepancy, because originally, if you look, the, the bylaws that we just received, which was not thirty days, it was seven days, it was sent out to the commission, a revised amendment on January seventh. Prior to that, there was an amendment to do the bylaws that was done in twenty twenty-one. And the chair agreed and made the reference that it should be residential residents. So I don't know if all the commissioners read that or not. So there's a lot of things that has taken place and a lot of side conversations or meetings that has led up to this. I'm not just making this up, all I can say is, there's evidence and supporting facts, if you just look at the council meet, at the commissioners' meetings. And again, I stand by this ordinance, and I ask that the, um, count, the city council take into consideration in regards to, in support of this change of the amendment. Thank you.
All right, um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess first, first I would ask why was it, um, why are we at the third reading before anyone had any other, uh, input for this other than what we received from the proposed, uh, amendment from Councilwoman Tillman? And then it was just, uh, comments on a couple of things that were said, so, uh, Mr. Hogan, Mr. Kerry Hogan, um, he said that this was in, something about the anger of a few, I don't know if he's still on or what exactly did that mean? Um, and then, um, uh, what, what brought this, I know, I think Council, Councilwoman Tillman just covered this where the, uh, the members, it was discussion, I guess, in the commission meetings about this, but I was wanting to, so this would only affect voting members, and it says that they can still be participants of the commission and help with, uh, what's going on with the commission, and that wouldn't be affecting anybody that wanted to still donate their time, I guess, would still be able to do so. And, um, yeah, the, the last thing was, is this, because I know with, with, previously with this, um, uh, this was introduced, I, I don't remember exactly when it was introduced, but I know it's been around for a minute, it's been tabled a few times and carried over because of, uh, Councilwoman Tillman's not being in, but was there at any time where this became an issue with the commission or people serving or not being able to fulfill their duties, or is it about just the, the, the voting members, or is it? I, I haven't been following it, that's why we have a liaison, we can't follow every board and commission ourselves, but is there a, uh, a specific issue with individuals inside the commission where these things are an issue, or is it just purely about the, the purity of, I guess, Michigan City residency as far as who serves? I know that was a lot, but if anybody could jump in and ask some of those.
Before you do that, before you do that, Councilman Tillman, is there a discrepancy in the, the language today? Because you, you said a whole lot, and I just wanted to, um, is there a discrepancy in the, um, the co- the code now?
Uh, yes, when I did the amendment, the original ordinance, amendment to the ordinance, it indicated, um, residents of LaPorte County, which should have read residents of Michigan City.
I'm saying, are there conflict, is there conflict of language in the ordinance now? I'm saying are there conflict, is there conflict of language in the ordinance now? Are there, is there one place that says Michigan City and one place that says LaPorte County or is it just a change?
It's just a change.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm sorry. Um, I'm not sure who the eight, seven, is that, uh, you, uh, Mr. Paul Prezvelinsky? Did you have something to add?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that is me. And, uh, I am in support of having the commissioners be residents of Michigan City. And that, as it was stated before, that these participants can be still active in the commission on subcommit, subcommittees. And I think that, I really do think that anybody that's serving on the board in the city of Michigan City should be a resident of the city because they're making decisions that affect, and we're the sponsoring organization. That, that's, that, that's the gist of it for me. And that also, this brings to mind to me the fact that we have, uh, someone on a commission that is primary residency is in Indianapolis, Indiana. And I have a problem with that, but we'll address that. But I think that we should go ahead and be voting the positive on this. And I think that's been a lot of input in, into it. But I think that from my aspect, I think some people are taking this personally.
Thank you. Any other-
And I say, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other comments? Because I, I do have a question. If, if, are there any additional comments? Yes, uh, Mr. Mack.
This is council comments, right?
Yeah.
You know, I'm going to just reiterate what I, uh, spoke about in the last meeting. And then, uh, just add to it, uh, you know, the, from what we've heard now and, uh, last meeting, I suggested people go back and watch the couple of meetings that Social Status actually had on this topic. And now there's three meetings and I suggest people, and I've watched them all. I will reiterate and stand upon my previous comments, uh, last meeting on the political nature that it seemed to have, if you just watch it for yourself. And on my comments on the educational attainment of a couple of members that I was talking to that they were talking about in the meetings. Um, I'm not going to say the names because nobody else is. But, uh, just because I'm impressed with someone with a master's degree doesn't have any bearing on everybody else on the commission that I have no idea what the educational attainment is. You know, I could talk about Michael Jordan scoring fifty without having to, you know, know, uh, what the eighth grader scored last week. I mean, I, you know, what I do know is what I know. And, uh, you know, I, I just, I don't get that reference that I, I could have possibly been talking about every, anybody except the individuals that I was alluding to. The, uh, this body, as far as this council is concerned though, I don't think we have any real vested interest in overriding, uh, these dedicated long-term members, uh, that have done a lot of continuity. A lot of these members have been on these boards for years, on this board, the Social Status Board, uh, since the beginning almost. And they had a vote on this amendment we're talking about right now. This ordinance change that we're talking about right now, the last meeting, they voted eight to two for us not to do it. Now, just from my logic. And because if, if we're voting all across every board in Michigan City to do this, I can understand our logic as a council saying all boards, yada, 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 all, all, all. But we're talking about one board. And we as a council are interjecting our opinion on one board that voted eight to two for us to not change rules that have been in existence since their charter. I would like to think that we have a super extra, extra, um, interest and expectation of change that we don't hold for other boards for us to, uh, jump in and, uh, override the will of that group of people. And I, you know, I'm impressed with a lot of those people in their community involvement, which is not to say nobody else does community involvement. They've been great participants in a lot of things for a lot of years. I mean, all the years I've been back in Michigan City and some when I was a youngster, so, um, I'll just reiterate, I don't think we have any basis to change this. And I, I think we would add to the political nature of this conversation by changing this rule that they voted eight to two to keep the same, uh, for the basis that we come, uh, and are not doing it for the other boards. That's my two say.
Thank you. I'm Councilman Brian Dabney.
Um, yeah, I was just listening and I agree with Councilman, uh, Michael Mack on that. And I'm still trying to figure out where I made comments about somebody's education. I have commented in, in regards to education about, uh, anybody on this board or anything like that. So I was a little confused with somebody came out and said, I heard comments from Brian Dabney about somebody's education. But in the, the grand scheme of things, I agree in the fact that when this commission was formed, it said LaPorte County. And now we want to switch it over to just Michigan City residents. And I'm just seeing comments and, and received phone calls and things like that. It takes certain people out of, to be on these subcommittees, they're no longer voting members. They'll thus be taking away of any power they may have. Uh, if you're just on a subcommittee, you're not a voting member. That's what I'm, I'm reading here in the comments and everything like that. Um, so I disagree with, with the ordinance in terms of, of overturning this because I just, it, you know, it, it just stay the way it has been. And, uh, and I'm going to vote, uh, nay, obviously, on the, the ordinance here. But I'm glad, uh, that the people came out and, and stood up for what they, what they feel. The people that are actually on the Social Status are African-American males. Um, so I just wanted to make that known.
Um, any other council comments before, um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just have one quick comment just for perspective. And you mentioned other, all of the boards and committees of the city. Aren't they essentially subcommittees of this board? See it as how they do a lot of the work that we're not able to do because it's just not humanly possible to do all of the work that is done. But those commissions and, and committees have extreme value. And we do listen to their input and they do a lot of the heavy lifting for things that ultimately they can't vote on. We ultimately vote on it, but they do the work. So isn't that the same thing? So a subcommittee can't be discounted by their inability to vote, per se. But it's still work that has to be done. I don't think that it's something that could be, uh, looked at lightly. Thank you.
Um, any other council comments? I, I have a question. I know that, um, there was a letter, um, of support that keeps being mentioned. Was it in support of the committee in general or was it something in support of keeping it LaPorte County residence? I'm just trying to under, it, as a letter keeps being submitted, if you could answer that Councilwoman Tillman, that would be great.
That letter was submitted, um, from the Executive Director of the Social Status of African-American Males of, by Mr. Garrett. Um, that letter was submitted during the time of the original amendment that was passed, that was, um, vetoed and then passed.
Okay, so that, I thought it was, it had, so, okay. I just want to make sure I'm not confusing if, if we received a new letter just specifically about, um, the residency required.
No, not to my knowledge.
And my last question, because I'm trying to understand, so this was the social status for LaPorte County? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'm sorry, could, could you repeat that, please?
Was this commission the social status, the social status of African-American males for LaPorte County?
The, the title from the twenty, two thousand and three bylaws indicates residents of LaPorte County.
Okay.
And now with the amendment, with everything that was in the amended, um, ordinance um, that I presented and that was passed, I imply everything was Michigan City. So again, it was brought to my attention by our legal counsel for city, for the city and for the council, not the commissioners of the social status, contrary to others' beliefs. Um, so I made the necessary adjustments based off of what, what, what they found and brought to my attention to reflect everything that I had in my amended ordinance.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, um, did, did you have any additional comments, um, Ms. Tillman? Councilwoman Tillman, before, um?
No.
All right. I would entertain, if there are no more, um, comments from the, the council, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Can I make a motion that we, um, pass the ordinance amending, um, two, four, five, seven commissions on the social status of African-American males?
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman and a second from, uh, Councilman, uh, Paul Prezvelinsky. Uh, Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Ms. Jacobs? Nay. Mr. Paul Prezvelinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezvelinsky?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Nay.
We have four in favor and five opposed.
All right. We want to, unfinished business. We have several nominations that we, um, need to, um, have appointments for. Um, the council has seven, well, it says seven. And six in parentheses. So appointments to the Commission on Social Status of African-American Males. We have several incumbents. Um, Ms. Aberdeen Allen for Minority Health Partners of LaPorte County, Pastor Jacinda Williams, Dr. Wyndham McCollum, uh, Mr. Willie Millsat, Ms. Latony Troutman, um, Pastor Dennis Carroll. Um, have we received any additional letters, um, outside of the ones that have been noted on the, um, on the, uh, the agenda?
No, we haven't, but we need to go back to new business.
Oh, did I miss? I'm sorry, I skipped all over that. Thank you. Actually, let's finish, oh, let's finish unfinished business, you're right, um, since I've already said all of that. Um, yeah, all right. Um, have we received any additional letters?
No, we have not.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now I'll go back. Thank you. All right, so new business. Um, we have our council assignments that we have to get done, um, and completed. So we have several, um, votes that we need to get completed this evening. Um, and then we will still send the full, um, committee assignments out. Um, so twenty twenty-two voting members on the following council committee assignments. Um, first one is for the Animal Control Board. Um, what we're going to do is I'm going to ask for any nominations for, for these boards and then we'll take a vote. Um, is anybody opposed to doing it that way? All right. And, um, the, the other item is, um, if we don't fill any of these tonight, um, we'll bring them back and I'll make some phone calls if, um, no one wants to step up and be nominated for any of these. So, um, I would accept any nominations for the Animal Control Board. Are there any nominations for the Animal Control Board? Anybody want to be on the Animal Control Board? All right, we'll come back and fill that one.
Hey, uh, you can put me on.
All right, good. Um, so, um, will somebody nominate Mr. Mack to be on the Animal Control Board?
I'll nominate Mr. Mack.
All right, we got to start from everybody.
Okay. Yeah, I did it. Who's second?
Everybody. All right, Ms. Nile, Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Okay, we have Mr. Paul Prezvelinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezvelinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Congratulations. All right, I will open it up to nominations for the Plan Commission. Are there any nomin-
I would like to nominate, uh, Sean Fitzpatrick.
Second.
All right, we have, so hold on, we've got to open up the nominations. We have one nomination for Sean Fitzpatrick with support. Um, uh, Councilwoman Jacobs.
I'd like to nominate Brian Dabney.
And we have, uh, nomination for, um, Councilman Brian Dabney. For it.
Your support?
Yeah, if he's, somebody, uh, all right, second, Matt, awesome. All right, for this vote, just, uh, state the last name of the, of, of your vote, um, for the Plan Commission. Um, Ms. Nile up on the vote.
All right, uh, Ms. Tillman?
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Dabney?
Dabney.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Mack?
Dabney.
Ms. Deitch?
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Don Prezvelinsky?
Patrick.
Mr. Simmons?
Fitzpatrick.
Ms. Jacobs?
Dabney.
And Mr. Paul Prezvelinsky?
Fitzpatrick.
We have six for Sean and three for, um, Brian.
All right, thank you. Um, Fitzpatrick. All right, I will open up the nominations for the Public Art Committee. Yes, Mr. Simmons?
I'll nominate, uh, Don Prezvelinsky. Aye.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Don Prezvelinsky. Um, any other nominations? All right, Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezvelinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prezvelinsky?
Ayes.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prezvelinsky. All right, moving on to, um, the social status of African-American males, I'll open up nominations.
Dabney?
Yes.
I nominate Tracy Tillman.
Right. And a second?
Support.
All right, support. Any additional, um, nominations?
I nominate Michael Mack?
Aye.
All right. We have Mr. Mack and we have Ms. Tillman. Any other nominations? All right, Ms. Not, please state the last name of the individual and, um, we will vote that way. All right, Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Tillman.
Mr. Mack? Ms. Deitch?
Simmons.
Mr. Don Prezvelinsky?
Tillman.
Mr. Simmons?
Tillman.
Ms. Jacobs? Mack? Mr. Paul Prezvelinsky?
Tillman.
Ms. Tillman?
Tillman.
Tillman.
And Mr. Dabney. Mr. Dabney?
I'll adjutant Mack.
Okay, we have six for, uh, Councilwoman Tillman and three for Councilman Mack.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the, the solid waste management. Um, open up nominations for solid waste management. Yes, Mr. Simmons?
I nominate Don Privalinski.
All right.
All right.
Support.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Don Privalinski, any, um, other nominations? All right, Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms., uh, Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Privalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Privalinski?
Ayes.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, next one, um, the tree board, I open up nominations for the tree board.
I nominate, uh, Dahlia Giegus.
We have, um, a nomination for Ms. Dahlia Giegus.
I'd like to nominate Councilman.
Second.
Um, all right, thank you, um, any other nominations?
I'd like to, um, nominate Councilman, um, Paul Privalinski.
Support.
All right, um, same, um, with this one, um, please state the last name of the individual when you click the vote. Thank you. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Deitch?
Uh, Mr. Paul Privalinski.
Don, um, Councilman Don Privalinski?
Paul, I think she said Paul.
Don.
Did you say Paul? No, Don.
Gail, did you say Don?
I'm sorry, I said Don.
Yeah.
Okay, if you said Don, I'm voting for Paul Privalinski.
Okay, Mr. Simmons? Mr. Simmons?
Ziegus.
Ms. Jacobs?
Jacobs.
Mr. Paul Privalinski?
Vote for Paul P.
Ms. Tillman?
Paul Privalinski.
Mr. Dabney?
Giegus.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Privalinski.
And Mr. Mack?
Giegus.
We have four for Councilwoman, uh, Giegus and five for Councilman Paul Privalinski.
You muted, Madam President.
My bad.
Um, nominations for the Urban Enterprise Association.
Madam, Madam President, I'd like to nominate, uh, Tracy Tillman.
We have a nomination, is there support?
Support.
All right, any other nominations for Urban Enterprise, um, zone? All right, Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Don Privalinski?
Tillman.
Mr. Simmons?
Tillman, aye.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Privalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman? Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, um, so moving back to unfinished business, um, for nominations, have we received any, um, letters? Um, so we received a letter for, um, Mr. Willie, um, Millsap and a letter from Pastor Dennis Carroll, did we receive anything from, um, um, any Michigan City residents in reference to the, that one doesn't expire until two fifteen, have we received anything from any resident? All right, so we can only do the nominations for the two, um, we did receive something from, um, I wanna say from Ms. Albertine Allen for, in reference to Keisha Ward, I believe, I thought? Did we?
Let's see. Um, I haven't received anything from them.
Did anybody else?
Unless it was sent to just the council, but, um, no, I have not.
Okay, so, yes.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I, uh, was looking at this, uh, is that, one, two, three, four, five, six, how many, uh, openings do we have?
Um, it's seven, it's actually six, six that are listed there and a resident, so that's seven. So there are seven appointments, but we've only received two letters so that we can actually do the nomination for those two. Um, which is, uh, Mr. Willie Millsap and Pastor Dennis Carroll from the Human Rights Commission. So I can entertain a motion for those two, but we will need, um, uh, letters from all of the other incumbents if they would like to stay on the commission or, um, uh, any resident that would like to be on the commission would ha- have to submit a form. So right now, we only have two that we can actually do a nomination for tonight.
Okay, do you want a nomination?
Yes, I need a nomination for, uh, Mr. Willie Millsap with the letter received from Swanson Center and a nomination for Pastor Dennis Carroll, uh, the, the letter was received from the Human Rights Commission and we can do them together.
I, uh, so moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, and if we moved and seconded, uh, on the nominations for, um, for Pastor Dennis Carroll and, um, Mr. Willie Millsap. Is, um, anyone opposed to, um, voting on them tonight? Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Privalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Privalinski?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to, um, comments from the public, um.
Right, we got nominations for, um, one council appointment.
Uh, we haven't received any forms.
Yeah, Rodney McCormick, Mr. McCormick.
And I asked if we received any form.
Um, these are letters that are representing these entities. This is a nomination that, um, can be applied to for the night.
Right, and I asked if we?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Okay, no, that's no problem, um, that's what I'm asking, have we received, the nomination for residents, have we received any forms?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Mr. Rodney McCormick.
So we did receive a form?
Right.
I would make a motion to, uh, appoint Mr. McCormick.
Support.
Thank you, and were there any other forms turned in for, um, the resident, for the common council appointment?
No.
All right, thank you. Um, anyone opposed to the vote? All right, Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Privalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Privalinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nyle. Um, so we're moving on comments from the public, if you would like to speak, uh, please raise your hand, keep your comments to three minutes. Um, also state your address, um, and, and, uh, please, no personal, um, uh, any personal texts, take it outside of the council meeting, please, thank you. Uh, Ms. Fay Moore, Mrs. Fay Moore.
Hi, Councilman, uh, Council, C. Council. I just, uh, again, I'd like to, um, thank you guys for all the hard work that you guys do. Since you guys have been in office, you have done a lot of, uh, made a lot of improvements and a lot of changes that are positive. But I still think that the Social Status Commission should stay the same as it is. It's not broken, don't fix it.
Thank you, and it was voted down. Did you have any additional comments, Ms. Um?
I must have missed that, I must have nodded out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore, you have anything else?
Yes, um, as far as, um, uh, social status, Latanya Trautman, she has relocated out of this city. So she will not, and we are, uh, the NAACP is looking for a replacement for her. And I just learned that Marty Corley has, uh, resigned and he was appointed by the neighborhoods and he was report, uh, appointed by Eastport Neighborhood. And back in the day, there was twenty-five commissioners and most of them were judges, probation department, parole department, and all of those people. And we got it dwindled down to, it was two neighborhoods and the people that you see that are listed in the ordinance as of today.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments? Mr. Rodney McCormick?
Yes, Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Um, I sit on several boards and I wanna first of all just thank you, Ms., um, I know Mr. Mack and, um, Ms., uh, Deitch, you guys was trying to do this last year, uh, about the workshop on, um, how the board should be ran. Um, I wanna tell you that that is a great, great idea and I hope that all the people that chimed in tonight will get on, that will, I hope that they participate in that workshop. It is crucial that we learn the rules and, and, um, and so we can move forward. Um, on another note, I just wanna say to everybody, thank you for voting me back on the social status. All I can say is that I'm gonna try to do my best, as I always do. I know some of you guys get upset with me because I bring up certain rules, but I believe if we are here to enforce the rules, we need to force it for everybody. And it shouldn't be no, um, nobody singling, no one, no one out, that's, that doesn't make sense to me whatsoever. And, and please, when it comes to appointing a liaison for the Michigan City Housing Authority, please put someone there that's gonna be strong and that's gonna fight, um, Mr. Mack, at the beginning, did a very good job. Um, he pointed out a lot of wrongdoing things and on my last comment, I wanna thank you, Mitch, Ms. President, for being willing to put in a hearing officer so we can have a hearing on these, uh, these commissioners on the housing authority that's continually violating, blatantly violating the law and doing what they wanna do. I wanna thank you guys and all of you guys have a good night, it's been a rough year for me and I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any additional public comments? Yes, Mr. Mr. Marty Corley.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, again, just thank you, I enjoy watching this meeting and watching the process, I don't always get to watch them. I just wanted to also clear, clear the air is that I didn't resign from the social status. Uh, I did not renew my term. Uh, again, after being on for twenty years, I just reexamined my, my ability to be, uh, accessible and then also my new job responsibilities of, you know, made it hard for me. So I will still continue to work on the, on the cell committee with the commission. I just don't want nobody to think that I was a quitter and that I resigned, I actually just didn't renew my term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Any additional comments from the public? Do you have any, anybody else, Andrew?
I think I can see.
All right, I don't see the mayor, is the mayor, I don't see the mayor on, I, we had put him on the agenda. I don't think we have him on today, so, okay, all right, um, open, uh, council comments. Yes, Mr. Privalinski, Don?
Uh, yeah, Madam President, I just wanna thank, uh, Councilman Simmons for the nominations to the, uh, Art Committee and the, uh, Solid Waste District. I've been on the Art Committee, I think, um, four years now in the Solid Waste District, approximately four years and, uh, enjoy both of them very much and, uh, I think we're getting worked on on those committees. And, uh, just to go back to that, you know, the, the workshop that we had with the MVH and, uh, the TIP districts and the Redevelopment Commission. And just something, something that I think, uh, we, we should all take away from that because the, uh, ordinance has been pulled. But just for general information, that, and it was discussed how the money is, uh, calculated and is, and distributed, uh, to the city. And at sixty percent, there's, uh, two determinations, the sub-allocation between the county and the cities and the towns within the county as follows, that sixty percent of the money that comes to the city from the MVH fund is dependent upon the population of the, uh, unit compared to the total county population. And forty-four percent, forty percent of the money shall be distributed based on the amount of roads and streets that are in the, uh, county and in the city. And nowhere in these, in the IC codes does it say that there is an exception for TIP districts paying for, uh, road repairs or that mileage would be eliminated that if MVH funds weren't spent in those areas, that the city would not get their just amount of MVH funds. So I just wanted to share that and that's one of the things that I learned through this whole discussion. Uh, so the facts are there and everybody have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Privalinski, um, uh, Councilwoman Dahlia Giegus.
Hi, thank you. Uh, I just wanna remind everybody that COVID is still alive and running and as a matter of fact, um, LaPorte County is monitoring their sewage and they had a record-breaking high COVID levels this week. So it's still here, our hospitals are full. And if you would like to order a test kit, the government has released them and it's, uh, the URL is special.usps.com slash test kits. So if you go to the postal service, you just put your address in, it, it takes like fifteen seconds. You put your address in and then they'll send it to your house, so you have free COVID tests that are available, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Um, council comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Paul Privalinski.
Thank you. Um, I, I would like to, uh, also coincide with my, uh, brother on his comments about the, uh, IC code because we, uh, got the IC codes and we looked through them and, uh, extensively and nowhere in the IC code did I see that TIP money or any outside money could not be used for paving. Secondly, is that also in that mixture, it's, it talks about registrations also have a indication on the allocation of MVH funds. But what we did get out of the, uh, meeting with, uh, on the, uh, paving.
on the paving and TIF monies is this, is that I asked the question to the attorney that were at that meeting and to representative of the financial group that, and it's not Umbaughan Associates anymore, if it was illegal to use that TIF money. And no one said yes and no one said no. So what I'm getting at is that this is a formulation in somebody's mind that we can't use TIF money. So what is the problem is that we're cutting our nose off despite our face because if we use, as I talked about before, if we use the TIF money, we can do more paving and get more grant money and do more paving and benefit the whole city. It's not about any one ward being against another ward. But I think that if we don't do it is that, and it has been done in the past, it has been done in the past, it has been done paving, which we found out was done outside the TIF areas. So what, what I'm saying is that I've been investigating this issue and in the near future, I'm going to put the, I am going to, I'm in the process of putting together a resolution to create a allocation area. An allocation area inside the TIF. And this legislation has been on the books for a few years. And that way, we can get something done. But it's only asking the TIF community, the TIF areas to contribute. But what I want to say is this, is that also is that that TIF money is also taxpayers' money. And it comes off of the top of the assessed valuation when those areas get established. And what the public needs to know is that every year the TIF areas get allocations in a settlement, a tax settlement, and this year they received over eight million dollars. And it'll, whatever the assessed valuation next year, it'll go up. So that money, if you want to talk about double taxation, okay, while they're taking the TIF money and they're also, the big question is how it affects all the taxing units in the city of Michigan City. So it's not a moot issue. This issue, we need to get a benefit from the TIF. The TIF is here to benefit the people of Michigan City in the TIF areas. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go forward and say this, is that I think that all the comments that have been made about it's illegal and it's, we can't do it and this. Well, I want to see a case where it's illegal to do this. And I don't want to hear about Munster anymore because that is totally, has no merit because they were talking about maintaining a park in the city of Munster. It had no bearing on any street repair, any street work of any kind. They were doing maintenance and improvement work in a city park. Matter of fact, it was a golf course. So with that being said, I would like to leave in the spirit of Martin Luther King and his non-violent approach to, to trying to get something done. And I just, I think that a lot of times people get in, we get into these discussions at, at city in city government and national government, and people take things too, too seriously. We need to work out, as I asked, as I said in the past, we need to come up with a compromise so that these taxing areas benefit the city, not just the areas that they're in. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Paul, Councilman Paul Prezwalinski. Any other council comments? Any other council comments? Am I unmuted? No, I'm not. All right. Well, I have a couple of things. So just January twenty-sixth at six PM on Zoom, we are having a workshop for boards and commissions. We're going to cover the open door law, giving notice. Clerk Gail Nyle will be presenting along with me. And we'll talk about minutes, a little bit about Robert's Rules of Order, you know, timeline and deadlines, and then meeting etiquette. And what we will try to do is do one of these once a quarter. And if anybody from the council has, I think, you know, if we decide to do something with demo finance before the we get to budget time, that might be a good one to do, but we'll try to do something once a quarter. And, and we will record it so that they can go back and see those. The second thing again, for any, if there is any attorney or a firm or if the council has anyone in mind that would like to submit a letter of intent, they should send it to the clerk's office. And like I said, we will set up an executive session to meet with these attorneys, but we, we have one firm and they've put together a solid letter and we'll get a date set for executive session to meet to have them present to us. Other than that, yes, it was a great holiday weekend. Was able to spend time with my family, so I truly enjoyed that. But I would like to say to, again, as we move forward, we got a lot of things we have to get done. And I just thank everyone who spoke this evening from the public. It was a lot of great dialogue and I hope we continue that. And COVID is strong. We are in the red. And so one thing that I will call and contact all the council members about in the future as we transition from red and the numbers go down, I think we still may have a prolonged hybrid process. And at some point, maybe we think about as we move from red to orange, maybe an optional, for the council to be optional in the chamber and everything else virtual. But that's something we have to discuss with the administration. But I did want to put that out to the council members for the future. Maybe we go to some different type of hybrid model. So again, I will entertain a motion if there, if all minds are clear, as we say, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
To adjourn.
Thank you. You all have a wonderful week and a good night.
You too. Good night.